Are we on? Have we got the mics turned on?
Test.
Test. Yes, test. Steve? Okay, uh, county.
The pledge of allegiance. If you're wearing a hat, please remove it faster.
Thank you. Let us pray. Sovereign God, our Father, we come before you in the name of your son Jesus Christ. We acknowledge that you are almighty and all-powerful, and you dwell all the treasures of wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Father God, we pray that your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. We pray, Father God, for this great city of Greenville and our great community. We pray that there will be unity and love and oneness and peace in the community. We pray, Father God, for these council men and council women whom you have given stewardship, Father God. We pray today that you would give them wisdom and guidance and understanding, that they may deal wisely in all the affairs, Father, that's before them. That this city will be a light unto other cities, Father God, and we know that you are a God of order, and you pray in this your will that everything be done decently and in order. I pray that this council meeting, the first one of the year 2021, I pray that everything be done decently and in order. And even when there are disagreements, Heavenly Father, I pray that there will be no discord amongst the people. I pray, Father God, in the name of your son Jesus Christ, that that Greenville, Father God, will just continue to be blessed by you. I pray, Father God, for for all who are in attendance in this meeting, Father God, I pray their safe return and and protection back home, Heavenly Father. And we just pray, Father God, that 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 these council men and women, Father God, would realize that they are public servants, Heavenly Father, and that they will serve with humility and with character and with dignity. I pray that there will be respect for each other, Heavenly Father. We ask it all in the name of your beloved son Jesus the Christ. Amen.
United States of America, public nation, God.
Citizens to be heard are invited to address the council on topics not already scheduled for public hearings or listed on the agenda. Present your completed citizens' comment card to the city secretary. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The city council cannot act on items not on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Concerns will be addressed by the city staff. They may be placed on future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and your address for the record. Carol, do we have anybody?
Hello. Okay. Well, here, city council. I'm John Turner, 37th and Duke, Pepperdine, Texas. Thing I want to talk about tonight is East Mount Cemetery. As some of you may know, my wife Shirley and I hosted a Rees Across America at East Mount Cemetery, uh, the other weekend on 19th December. I don't remember too many people out here being there, but, uh, anyway, uh, we're doing a cleanup tomorrow. We have to pull all the rees out. There was 365 veterans that we located out there, where we placed 365 rees on those graves. Anyone would like to come out and help us remove those rees, discard them, they're more than we, uh, we'd be more than happy to have them out there. And second item on East Mount, I realize that's a large cemetery, however, it's in very, very extremely sad shape. And I know the city pays, uh, for folks to come out there and mow the grass and stuff like that, but I've also been out there several times and I've seen them run over the markers, run over the headstones, rack them up. Some of them are buried out there. I would hope there could be a little more attention paid to taking care of this cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. What time what time is, uh, you're gonna start out there?
Uh, we're gonna start out about noon tomorrow.
Noon tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, nobody else? All right, we're gonna move on. We've got public hearings. First item on the public hearing, consideration and action on an ordinance authorizing the FY 2020/2021 budget amendment to increase revenue projections in the water wastewater fund. Press?
Evening. Uh, what this item is about is we had, um-
You need to get close to the microphone so that we can hear you.
What this item is about is to increase our revenue fund with new water meters, sewer meters we're setting, get, uh, those are now being charged. We get monies for this. We needed to adjust our revenue side of it to show the monies we were taking in, so we'd have the expenditure to pay all these new meters, water and sewer taps we were putting in. So that's what the agenda item is asking for approval, to increase the revenue fund so we can increase the expenditure side.
Okay, so an increase in in the funds is paid for by what? When it's done, it's paid for by the developer or the homeowner?
Right, sir. When they pull, they request a meter, they have to pay for it, that goes into the revenue side, but we had to adjust that so we could pay for it out of the expenditure side.
So therefore, there's no impact to the the citizens as far as the tax-
That is correct. No net impact to the city for this.
Okay. Anybody on the council have any questions?
And this is just to reflect in the budget, the, um, fee increase, or, I mean, it's not an increase, it's a new fee that that didn't exist before the budget, right? That's correct. That was one of the fees you approved when on our October budget, and so we did our projections, and with the growth we've had, we've exceeded that, so we've had to adjust the revenue side. There's no net change to the city budget. And, um, I had a, um, a guy who's built houses here for a long, long time, um, asked me about this, um, and it's it's my understanding that, um, this this is this is just a pass-through cost. We're paying, we're paying a private vendor to do this, and this used to be a service the city would just do, but as the number of houses has increased, we can't, we we don't have the time to do it anymore, so we've outsourced it. Is that correct? In a way, yes, sir. One of the things, we were not charging for the physical meter itself, but we're now charging for the meter and then the installation fee with it, but you are correct, we're using an outside vendor to help us keep up with the growth that we're having, and it has, it has really been a tremendous help. We've been able to keep up with development, keep up with our routine work we needed to do, and it it's really done a good job for us.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, press.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open it up to public hearing, or does anybody wish to speak on this issue?
No cards.
Okay. None heard. I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'll, if there's no other discussion, I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. All right, Cedric. And I'm gonna give it to Brent for second. Please vote. And it passes seven zero. Okay, item six B, public hearing, consideration and action on an approval of a conditional use permit. Steve?
Yes, sir. Are those able, we can pull them up? This will be the first of the, uh, new, uh-
Yeah.
conditional use permits for a tail liquor store that was voted on by the citizens back in, approved. This will be the first one that I'll be bringing. It's actually a spec store going into Old Bell's building, Promenade, be taking up 16,000 square foot of that building to do it. They were at P&amp;Z last night, and they've got a pretty good presentation, which I'll show you.
By the way, council members, you have a a copy that reflects, uh, what happened at P&amp;Z last night. I think the only change from what's in your packet is the results from the P&amp;Z.
Um, please. The, uh, door, if you'll, if you'll, if you can look at it, where the Bells is now, they are red, there's, I think that store is 22,000 square foot. They're not gonna use the whole store, they're gonna use a bit of it. They're gonna use 16,000 square foot. The other part in the back would just be vacant. There will be, there will be obviously a quarter and a, uh, exit out the back, but that that will not be occupied, that back space back there. And as they've alluded to, and and I will go ahead and do it since they said it last night, I've been, I've been in there many times, the back of, the back of the, there's huge spaces behind that are absolutely actually not used, so there's, there's no usable space, but it will be a storefront. It meets the criteria of the new ordinance. I'm assuming y'all have got that ordinance. Took it to planning and zoning last night after some discussion, they made them, they made a recommendation that the be approved, but they did put a caveat on it, they don't want the, they don't want the logo, the rabbit with the speckles on it. The vote, the vote was 6.6 to approve opposed. Really, I can answer any questions if you'd like about the ordinance or whatever. I'd, I'd rather than do a presentation to you on exactly how the store's run. I would entertain anything.
Anybody have any questions for Steve? All right, thank you. We've got the person for that's gonna tell us about this. Here she comes.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Frank, and I'm with Segovia Retail Group, and we're representing the ownership of the mall. Um, as you know, the mall was, uh, demalled a few years ago, five years ago, um, and it's recently, and it's been performing very, very well. Um, it's a great location, it's the best location in Greenville, and we lost Bells due to bankruptcy, um, last fall, and we just recently lost JCPenney as well. We were approached by Specs, um, uh, with the idea, this was last fall, with the idea that the city of Greenville, um, would approve liquor, and if it did, that they would be very interested in being in our, um, shopping center to backfill one of the spaces, and we were very interested. We love the, uh, the mix. We didn't want to replace, um, an apparel store with another apparel store, and so we were really excited with Specs because they bring, um, you know, a really good new mix to the, uh, to the tenant mix, and they do a lot of different things. They serve, or they sell, you know, packaged beer, wine, and liquor, and then they also have some accessories, um, gift bags, gifts, and also some food items. So, um, we love the use, and we, um, were real anxious to, um, to see if we can, uh, get this location to work for Specs and the project. And and he's right, we're, what we're doing, it's 19,600 square feet is the Bell space, and we're, uh, Specs only needed 12,000, and we agreed to cut the space down, um, to kind of meet in the middle, and so they're gonna lease 16,000 square feet. They're gonna have 99 feet of frontage. We're not doing anything to the storefront except replacing the the fascia colors and putting the Specs sign.
Anybody have any questions? Al?
Thanks.
Al, Al, move your mic up closer.
That's a question, that's a question. Does the mall itself have any regulations?
Um, not especially. We usually allow, uh, we want the tenants to have their their standard prototypical storefront, um, so it's really subject to the municipality, um, and, you know, what governs the size and the height of the letters. Um, we don't have a materials, uh, criteria in for the mall itself. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Carol, do we have any cards on this?
Yes, Ms. Powell. Ms. Powell? Here.
Hello. My name's Aaliyah Powell. I'm representing 6721 Flamingo. Um, it's out the back door of the proposed store. Um, so I, I wanted to just bring a couple of concerns that I had. I reviewed the information submitted, and I have lots of personal feelings against this type of store coming to town, but I'm gonna leave those out and just address what was presented. Um, I believe y'all would have this copy showing that the store, the type of store being a liquor store while voted in the ordinances or voted into, um, being allowed back in November by city, uh, the citizens. There, there are some concerns about what's being submitted here, like we're rushing a little bit and maybe need to table the discussion until some answers are given, and maybe y'all know more than than I've been shown, but what I read is it's not part of the bigger plan, um, that Greenville had set up. You know, I'd read the comprehensive plan 2025 for Greenville, and it said if something didn't fit, you know, the objectives, then the applicant had to provide evidence of why it would fit our community and our city. And so I-
We're setting get uh those are now being charged. We get monies for this. We needed to adjust our revenue side of it to show the monies we were taking in. But we'd have the expenditure to pay all these new meters, border sewer caps we were putting in. So that's what the agenda item is asking for approval. It increased the revenue funds so we can increase the expenditure side.
Okay, so an increase in in the funds is paid for by what? When it's done, it's paid for by the developer or the homeowner?
Right, sir.
So there's no end.
Request the meter, they have to pay for it. That goes into the revenue side. But we had to adjust that so we could pay for it out of the expenditure side.
So therefore, there's no impact to the citizens as far as the town.
There's no net impact to the city for this.
Okay. Anybody on the council have any questions?
And this is just to reflect in the budget, the um fee increase, or I mean, it's not an increase, it's a new fee that didn't exist before the budget, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That was one of the fees you approved when on our October budget. And so we did our projections. And with the growth we've had, we've exceeded that, so we've had to adjust the revenue side. There's no net change to the city budget.
And um I had a um a guy who's built houses here for a long, long time. Um asked me about this. Um and it's my understanding that um this this is this is just a pass through cost. We're paying we're paying a private vendor to do this, and this used to be a service the city would just do. But as the number of houses has increased, we can't we we don't have the time to do it anymore. So we've outsourced it. Is that correct?
In a way, yes, sir. One of the things, we were not charging for the physical meter itself. But we're now charging for the meter and then the installation fee with it. But you are correct, we're using an outside vendor to help us keep up with the growth that we're having. And it has it has really been a tremendous help. We've been able to keep up with development, keep up with our routine work we needed to do. And it it's really done a good job for us.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Press.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open it up to public hearing, or does anybody wish to speak on this issue?
No cards.
Okay. None heard. I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'll if there's no other discussion, I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. All right, Cedric. And I'm gonna give it to Brent for second. Please vote. And it passes seven zero. Okay, item six B, public hearing, consideration and action on an approval of a conditional use permit. Steve?
Yes, sir. Are those able, we can pull them up? This will be the first of the uh new uh
Yeah.
conditional use permits for a retail liquor store that was voted on by the citizens back in approved. This will be the first one that I'll be bringing. It's actually a spec store. Going into Old Bell's building, promenade. Be taken up sixteen thousand per foot of that building to do it. They were at P and Z last night. They've got a pretty good presentation, which I'll show you.
By the way, council members, you have a a copy that reflects uh what happened at P and Z last night. I think the only change from what's in your packet is the results from the P and Z.
Um please. The uh door, if you'll if you'll if you can look at it. Where the bells is now, they are read this. I think that store is twenty-two thousand square foot. They're not gonna use the whole store. They're gonna use of it. They're gonna use sixteen thousand square foot. The other part in the back would just be vacant. There will be there will be obviously a quarter and a uh exit out the back. But that that will not be occupied, that back space back there. And as they've alluded to, and and I will go ahead and do it since they said it last night. I've been in I've been in there many times. The back of the back of the there's huge spaces behind that are absolutely actually not used. So there's there's no usable space, but it will be a storefront. It meets the criteria of the new ordinance. I'm assuming y'all have got that ordinance. Took it to planning and zoning last night after some discussion. They made them they made a recommendation that the be approved. But they did put a caveat on it. They don't want the they don't want the logo, the rabbit. The vote, the vote was six point six to approve opposed to. Really, I can answer any questions if you'd like about the ordinance or whatever. I'd I'd rather than do a presentation to you on exactly how the store is run. I would entertain anything.
Anybody have any questions for Steve? All right, thank you. We've got the person for that's gonna tell us about this. Here she comes.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Frank, and I'm with Segovia Retail Group, and we're representing the ownership of the mall. Um as you know, the mall was uh demalled a few years ago, five years ago. Um and it's recently and it's been performing very, very well. Um it's a great location. It's the best location in Greenville. And we lost Bell's due to bankruptcy um last fall, and we just recently lost J.C. Penney as well. We were approached by Specs um uh with the idea, this was last fall, with the idea that the city of Greenville um would approve liquor. And if it did, that they would be very interested in being in our um shopping center to backfill one of the spaces. And we were very interested. We love the uh the mix. We didn't wanna replace um an apparel store with another apparel store. And so we were really excited with Specs because they bring um, you know, a really good new mix to the uh to the tenant mix, and they do a lot of different things. They serve there or they sell, you know, packaged beer, wine, and liquor. And then they also have some accessories, um gift bags, gifts, and also some food items. So um we love the use, and we um were real anxious to um to see if we can uh get this location to work for Specs and the project. And and he's right, we're what we're doing, it's nineteen thousand, six hundred square feet is the Bell space. And we're uh Specs only needed twelve thousand, and we agreed to cut the space down um to kind of meet in the middle. And so they're gonna lease sixteen thousand square feet. They're gonna have ninety-nine feet of frontage. We're not doing anything to the storefront except replacing the the fascia colors and putting the spec sign.
Anybody have any questions? Al?
Thanks. Back to Sorry, hang on.
Al, Al, move your mic up closer.
Back to the question. Does the mall itself have any regulations?
Um, not especially. We usually allow uh we want the tenants to have their their standard prototypical storefront. Um so it's really subject to the municipality. Um and you know what governs the size and the height of the letters. Um we don't have a materials uh criteria in for the mall itself. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Carol, do we have any cards on this?
Yes, Ms. Powell. Ms. Powell.
Hello. My name's Aaliyah Powell. I'm representing sixty-seven, twenty-one Flamingo. Um it's out the back door of the proposed store. Um so I I wanted to just bring a couple of concerns that I had. I reviewed the information submitted. And I have lots of personal feelings against this type of store coming to town. But I'm gonna leave those out and just address what was presented. Um I believe y'all would have this copy showing that the store, the type of store being a liquor store, while voted in the ordinances or voted into um being allowed back in November by city, uh the citizens. There there are some concerns about what's being submitted here, like we're rushing a little bit and maybe need to table the discussion until some answers are given. And maybe y'all know more than than I've been shown. But what I read is it's not part of the bigger plan um that Greenville had set up. You know, I'd read the comprehensive plan twenty-twenty-five for Greenville. And it said if something didn't fit, you know, the objectives, then the applicant had to provide evidence of why it would fit our community and our city. And so I was looking at what was turned in, and I'm not sure who exactly fills it out. But y'all would have this too, where it lists the five questions that have to be answered um from that applicant. And the main one I wanna focus on, I didn't feel like there's five of them. I'm not gonna read them to you. There hopefully you have it. I don't feel the answers are adequate. And I specifically wanted to look at number five. It says, does the proposed use present a significant benefit to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community? And the second part of that question was, would it contribute to the city's long-term economic well-being? While I would assume there's going to be tax revenue, which I can appreciate. The answer provided was this project would be something new for Greenville and be the first of its kind. Doesn't tell me what kind of tax revenues this will bring. It doesn't tell me yes or no. Does it provide anything good or negative for the welfare of our community? I have my feelings on what it provides for the community as far as welfare. I personally would be um, what's the word? I would I would actually have an advantage by tax revenue increases. We own nine properties in Greenville. Like I said, one out the back door here and seven or eight others within two miles of the store. And we get tax breaks on our property taxes when we have increased income. So I I get that there's that benefit, but I don't I don't see that explained anywhere by the applicant here. So I'm asking the council, what are those tangible benefits to our community? And how does it affect the welfare? You know, especially it doesn't necessarily affect me much, but I'm more concerned about my kindergartner at Bowie. It affects her long run of what we bring to town and what benefits it's going to provide overall. So I'm asking council to table this until the applicant Specs or the city does the research to say, how does this change what's already in our city? How's it impact us? What's the good and what's the bad? That's my ask for now, is just table it till we see more research.
Thank you.
No more.
Okay. I'm gonna close the the public hearing. Does anybody on the council have any questions or comments they would like to make?
Yes, sorry.
If not, I'll
Just just for just to answer her question. It's not to answer her question, but like uh when these courses are being asked on all these agendas, who um who do we have that fill this out?
Steve does.
You answer her question?
Well, recently I put it that way is because it is something new.
You gotta talk into the mic, Steve.
I'm sorry. It's something the citizens voted on uh over sixty percent voted for it. From a planning's aspect, I'm looking at it as a retail store. That's that's what that's really why I gave that answer. It's a new business. It's gonna be. I don't know what the impact of it's gonna be either. I don't really know what the impact would be as far as health and safety be with a liquor store. So I left it that way, left it a new business so that P and Z can look at it from that aspect and so could council, you know. That that's one of the reasons why when we did the ordinance, we made it a C U P so that we could decide if we wanted one liquor store or fifty, or if we wanted to put them in certain places and all that. So I mean, it's new to me too, so I kinda left it open, you know. I I absolutely know nothing about a liquor store and what kind of I'm sure it's got a pretty good tax base to it, but I don't know that information. So I was pretty vague on that.
But as the council uh well knows, we spent a lot of time uh ensuring that our ordinance on liquor stores going in uh was in complete compliance with the Texas A B C rules. Um we had to go back and correct that a couple of times when it was brought to the citizens. Um there was just over sixty-seven percent of the people that voted that said, yes, they wanted it in here. Anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, I think our our job at this point, after it's been petitioned by the public and um approved by the public um is is just zoning. Where's the best place to put this? And uh I think we're fortunate to have um a reputable company like Specs coming to a um to a vacant place in a prominent shopping center um as opposed to, you know, uh other options that we could have um for this kind of of a thing. And so I know a lot of people in town and maybe a lot of people even on council um share your concerns, Ms. Powell, with a a liquor store. And um and then those those are understandable. But at this point, you know, it's not it's it's not the council's position to decide whether or not we should have one of these in town because the citizens have already voted for that. We we can't stop it. Um we can only um go according to our current zoning ordinances and and decide. So I I think this is a very good location. Yes.
As far as as far as number five, and of course, I'm still learning about this too. The one of the things that Jennifer brought up last night on the mall that she did tonight was the research showed that an upper end liquor store, which a specs is, in my opinion, is it it brings it brings more business to the mall itself. So it actually it actually helps the mall. I understand what she's talking about too. But it does it does have a benefit by being in the mall that it I I think I'll stop in Staples or whatever while I'm here. So it it does bring some value to the mall too.
Well, it it uh it also creates jobs. I don't know if Specs is here tonight. They could probably tell us how many jobs it's gonna create. And unquestionably, it'll add to the sales tax. Uh we don't, like you say, we don't know what it will be. But it'll impact the sales tax, I think, considerably.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
And your motion is with or without or on the the logo?
Uh it doesn't really matter to me. I mean, I don't. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I I don't I don't think we need to be in a position of deciding what companies put on the logo as long as it's not offensive or something. They they have
As long in my opinion, as long as it's not uh racist, as long as it's not vulgar. And you know, it's just a a open thing.
It complies with our sign ordinance.
I'll move for approval of the ordinance as written.
With the allow them to make the choice whether they put the logo on?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do I have else? All right. Please vote.
I wonder.
Nope, I'm sorry. All right, it passes seven zero. All right, moving on to item C, consideration and action on a request for a zoning family three. Steve?
Yes, sir. This this petition is uh off of Colorado Street, Eastland. Uh it backs up to High Meadow out close to the high school. Uh if you remember a while back, it was a zoning change. It was done just adjacent to Lyons Larry, right off of Colorado. We rezoned it SF three. Um that's what the request is here. She'll get that she'll get that drawing up.
You you need to move the mic or you need to stand over.
I can't be still, you know me.
I I know, but moving back and forth, we catch part of it. Put it in your hand and that one.
I'll try. I'll try.
Sing us a song.
I'll stand right here and hold it, and I'll do it. The uh so it's brought to P and Z last night. This property has sit vacant for quite some time. Like I say, there's fixed to be movement to the south that this one will actually attach to when it's all said and done. And we did rezonate SF three a few months back. I can't remember. Kayla did that one too. She's here tonight and will do a presentation in a second. But there was concerns last night. I I'm I'm just gonna tell you some of the concerns last night so you'll know. And I'll there I go again. I'll try to I'll try to answer those. Uh one of the questions uh was asked was, how much is it gonna cost the city to sewer this? You know, it and stuff doesn't flow uphill, and that is a true statement. There this developer will have to put in a lift station, which we've already been looking at to see what we can do to make sure we can get sewer to work. So yes, there will be a lift station built here at full cost of the developer. The city of Greenville is not gonna spend a dime on this. It's all on the developer, the building, the streets, the whole schmo. So I just wanted to relieve them of that. There was an issue that came up, if you'll if you'll look on the map, that up at the top, where you see those lots, it says Eastland Avenue. Uh we didn't get the question answered last night, but I can answer it today. Yes, there was a right of way there, still is a right of way there, except at one time, half of that right of way was abandoned, and that's the half where the houses are already off of High Meadow. So their fence lines wouldn't change at all, and what we would do, we still have to replat this if y'all rezone it. We would we would just get rid of that. So Eastland would never go across there. It couldn't go across there now if you wanted to because half of the right of way has already been abandoned. So that was that was another issue they had. One of the other issues was during construction, when they tear up Colorado Street. And yes, it needs some work. What's gonna how do how do we get it assured that it's gonna get fixed? Well, how we do that, first place, before you can get a building permit, engineering has to sign off and okay it to be let go to put houses on. They're not gonna let that go until we get that street back to at least the condition it's in now, which is for it best, but that's all I can say on it. We're not gonna let them tear it up further and it stay that way. Whatever whatever damage is done will has to be repaired before that will be released and before we'll issue a building permit. As far as increased traffic, yeah, obviously, there's gonna be some increase in traffic. Uh we are gonna take the road on out to Eastland. That road's not existent today, which will take some of the pressure off the neighborhood. And then as they build phase three, there's also another road on down the way that will tie back into Colorado. And eventually, the two subdivisions will tie together, and there'll be multiple ways out of there. Uh by changing it from SF two to SF three, you're they'll gain they'll gain ten building lots. It's gonna get ten more houses than you would if it was the SF two. Uh what he's proposed on this, and you can't see it very well, is a clubhouse, a swimming pool, soccer field. Um missing one of them. There's several different amenities down there that go along with this HOA that would be built. As as a matter of right, though, they could start tomorrow building SF two type houses on that. Uh I know there's a lot of concern about SF three, but you know, that that property has sit out there forever, forever. And and every time we talk to any developer about it, they wanna change it to SF three. And it's just kind of the course we're going right now. We wanna continue to go that way. Well, I guess we can figure that out. But I think I've addressed all the issues on it.
Would you explain a little bit more? Would you explain a little bit more about the soccer field and the other part of that? Is that part of our park ordinance compliance?
Now, we talked about that last night, and I don't know if you'll remember or not, but but I think Daniel alluded to it when we were doing that. Anything that we've had talks about, and we've been talking, we've been talking about this one for over a year. Y'all, of course, we we don't bring it till we're ready to do something. Anything that we've already had discussion in, planning meetings and and such as that, we're grandfathered and don't have to don't have to do that.
Okay, so what, I mean?
That that is also private. I mean, that's it's an HOA, so it it's that's not a public.
So that's something they could decide not to do.
Correct. Yeah, my 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 guess would be, and it's probably a pretty good one, if we don't do the SF three zoning, he'll probably go back to the SF two to get his to get his ten lots, and we probably won't have the amenities. That would be my guess. Correct.
But is there anything to keep us, I mean, during this process, from him changing his mind and just making all those houses as well?
No, there is not.
Because once it's that's a three, he could put in
That's exactly right.
Another twenty houses over there.
That is exactly right.
Okay.
So if he goes from SF two, where it is now, to an SF three, you said he'd he would be able to add ten more homes?
Yes, if he builds this.
If he built like this, he could he could only add ten more homes by changing that and compressing
Yes.
the lot size from nine thousand to five thousand square feet.
But Councilman Money is correct. If if the zoning goes and he goes, you know, I think I'm just gonna build houses and go with it. Yes, he could. He could take that property up and build houses.
But likewise, we don't have any guarantee that if if it was approved and it goes to an HOA, which I don't think we have any control on, the there's no guarantee that he would build the uh the swimming pool and rest of that stuff anyway.
That is correct. Correct. That's a whole different. Yeah, we'd we'd have we had to start over, but yes, that's correct. Yeah, if you wanna really tie something down, it has to be it has to be planned.
One of the concerns I have is is where the pool and the rest of that stuff where the entertainment for the people are in there is phase three.
Right.
And I haven't seen anything that talked about phase one is gonna take this long, phase two this long, and how long till phase three? So we could basically sit here for five, six, seven, eight years and them not build any of that because they haven't started phase three.
That is correct. And question was asked by one of the commissioners last night was, well, what about the HOA? Are those people in phase one are just starting? Are they gonna have to pay that full fee? And the the answer that came back, and Kayla's here, I'm gonna let her talk. She came back with, there's a reduced a reduced rate until they get to that point.
I guess the other side of it is if we just don't change, I mean, it's been sitting there however many years or decades as SF two with nothing happening.
Correct.
If this gives us a better chance of getting some development, that's
No, that's not good.
Yeah, I will.
Just because we wanna keep going to SF three, just because we have land and everybody wanna get it developed quick. Everybody come to agreement with this FS uh FL three.
Right.
Trying to squeeze properties in. So it's no guarantee on what he's talking about uh with the pool, park, or whatever it is um because like you say, it's HOA, and it's no guarantee. You got all the different phases that he talking about, phase one, two, three. So I mean, if you really wanna build, you'll build on SF two. That's what you have the majority of the uh in neighborhood is SF FL two besides this one area that I'm looking at. So it's no reason to change. Like if you 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 wanna add to the city, we're trying to get away from the SF three. I don't know if that was told to him or not, so just build, keep the same and just all build.
I will I will add further that that uh Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of the zoning change by unanimous vote.
Anybody have any other questions for Steve? Okay, at this point, I'll open it up to a public hearing. Carol, do we have anybody that uh wish to speak?
John Kelso.
Is the applicant here? Yeah, is the applicant here?
Is the applicant here? Please come up. I'm sorry. John, please hold off. My mistake. We'll give you a chance to convince us. And then, John, you can be first up.
Good evening. Kayla Wood with Stovall and Associates. Um was denied last night, and I immediately called the developer and let him know.
Close to the mic, please.
Um I immediately called the developer and let him know, and he was fine with the SF two zoning. It was just the model with the amenity center that he was providing. He did that hundred lots to be able to make the HOA fees work. Um but he said if, you know, his ultimate goal is to be a good neighbor and to be a good developer for the city. So if SF two is the result of this evening, he's gonna continue with the development.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, sir. Unless there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Is he gonna bring in extra sunshine so it'll be warmer and?
Sure hope so.
All right, thank you. John?
John Kelso, six thousand five Horn Drive, Greenville, seven five four oh two. Um I I'm 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 in favor of this project, and here's the reason why. This is exactly the type of development we've been wanting to come into our city. Somebody to come in and provide some amenities more than just streets and and houses. And that's what this guy's doing, not because we're making him do it. He's grandfathered in. He doesn't have to do that. But because he sees the benefit of having some sort of recreational area within a neighborhood, which is what we need, which which we haven't had for a long time. So you say, well, there's no reason to change from two to three. Well, there is, if it's going to bring in some amenities, some recreational benefit to the city. Now, I understand it's not it's private, it's not public. But still, this is this is a bunch of people that can be serviced with a recreational area by their choice. So there is a good reason to change this to uh SF three. If if you don't, the the odds are are very, very well that he'll go ahead and come in and build SF two and and eliminate the recreational area and just put houses there, which is a bad trade-off, in my opinion. We we need, if if the trade-off is SF three, which is seems to be what a lot of people are wanting to buy, that's they seem to be buying it. Um SF three plus recreational facility near your near your house in your neighborhood, then that's a good trade-off for versus an SF two with no no benefit like that. So that's why I think it's a good idea to go ahead and approve this. Um I do have question, again, that I asked last night. And I I'm I didn't really, still haven't heard a good answer on Colorado. Let's never mind, let's pretend he comes in and builds a hundred homes, ninety-seven homes, whatever it is, and doesn't tear up the road, and it's just like it is to it is, and doesn't tear up the road, and it's just like it is today. That road cannot service 100 additional families living in that area. Never mind the additional 100 that's already been approved out of this development between there and the high school. So what is the plan? What plan does the city have to make sure that road can service all those new houses that get put in? Are you guys, do you have a five-year plan? Are you, are you setting money aside because you know you're going to have to fix that road, not from him tearing it up, but you're going to have to fix it from the condition it's in today, make it serviceable? So what is the plan? Or where are you setting money aside for that? I, I still, that's an open question that I think is important.
One thing I will add to that is the city does have a transportation subcommittee, and they are doing an assessment. We have already awarded a contract for somebody to survey the roads to identify which one should be fixed first. So it'll fall into that category and it'll be addressed there. Carol, do we have anybody else?
John Turner.
Here, City Council, John Turner, 3702 Pepperport Drive, Greenville. Since I live over in that area, I know how that, that area is, I know how it works, I know how it looks. Colorado is basically worthless. It takes some time to drive Colorado because of the huge potholes, depth of the potholes, stuff like that. I just sent Summer some pictures today. But not only Colorado, to get to working where they want to put these homes, you've got, uh, let's see, I think it's four streets going into Colorado to get there. Now, these streets will not tolerate heavy machinery, heavy laden trucks. They're already in bad shape. All but one of the four are under, are in bad shape. So there has to be something laid aside to make sure these streets are going to be repaired or fixed. Some of these streets, you can't get a big truck between it, up through the street, without knocking somebody's car, truck, or garbage can or something off the side of the road. The streets are very, very narrow. So something needs to be looked at about that. That's just what I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol, anybody else? All right. Does anybody on the council have any other questions or concerns? If not, I'll entertain...
I was just going to say, I think that the, the trade-off of SF3 with the amenities is an advantage over SF2, but is there any way to assure that? What about the, is the area that he's talking about for amenities also being rezoned to SF3? It's in the section... Okay. And so will, before he starts developing, will he have to come and get plat approval and those kinds of things? And so if, if he came forward with a plat that was not consistent with this, what would city staff be able to do?
I don't, I don't know what we could do. I mean...
Yeah.
Because, because, I mean, and Kayla will tell you, that's a concept. Obviously, that's not what it's, exactly what it's going to look like because they haven't spent the money yet to really get down and measure it all out and see what they could do, you know? Most of the time, a developer wants to do the zoning change first before he invests a lot of money in engineering and all that, too. Get it done. But there's, there's absolutely no assurance, and the plat won't, the plat won't help us other than cleaning up the, the rightaways that we're getting rid of and making sure all that's right, the detention pond to make sure that's there, which is down in that area. But as far as the amenities, I don't, I'm, I'm not aware of anything that we can hold them to that, to a plat with, I've got the zoning for the amenities.
I don't see any advantage of, of going to a SF3. We have no guarantee that the, the park and the pool and that kind of stuff is going to be in there. She said the developer is willing to go ahead and build on SF2. I don't see, I personally don't see a reason to change because we have no guarantee that they're going to do it. Al?
I agree. SF3 models, I agree. Plan developers, so what we see, I suppose, tighten things down. Then, then it, I just...
Any other comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Frederick, seconds. Please vote. Okay, moving on to ordinance 7A, consideration and action on an ordinance authorizing a professional service agreement with Bartlett and West for water system master plan. Press?
Yes, sir, what this is, is this goes back to our water plant and our whole water distribution system. I did a lot of research on this. We do not have a master plan or a roadmap on where to extend water mains, the size of them, and that type of information. We're kind of going by, whether there's a 10-inch line now, we'll just extend that and hope for the best. And, and I don't believe in that. I think we need a master plan to tell us what size line to, to anticipate the growth that we are having, to make sure we have the line sizes to provide the fire protection and the water we need to service these areas. So what this is, it's a, it's a consultant to help us come up with a master road plan on where to put lines, what size to put them on, look at our pressure planes and see if we possibly need more ground storage areas, or we can do with what we have, or, you know, modifications of that nature. But it would be a good roadmap for us to be able to plan for the future. And that's what we're asking for tonight, is approval of this contract to get started on that.
So if, if you've got an 8-inch water line going down Washington Street or whatever, and you get a break, you would look at this, and if he says in the future you should have 12-inch line, would you put a 12-inch line in to interface to that 8, or would you continue on with the 8, since that's what you have already?
No, we, if we had a large break or something, we would put a new line in at the right size to provide the water for future expansion.
So you'd have, in my case, you would have like an 8-inch line and then a 12-inch line and back to an 8-inch line, but in the future, as you had to replace part of the 8, you would go up to 12?
That's correct. We could do it in that mechanism, but, you know, without trying to disrupt the whole city at one time.
Yeah, it'd be nice to be able to just pull the straw and, and replace it all, but that doesn't work that way.
Correct. But it does give us a good roadmap on what we need to do.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Press?
Have comments? Are there any? But urgent or comprehensive plan that we're currently developing. That wasn't a main planning and development, I don't know.
Al, you need to move your mic to your, your...
Other lapel.
Your necktie or your other lapel, because you've got it here and you turn and talk this way.
Sorry. Boy, we don't want to overbuild our... Oh, it's very important.
That is correct.
All right. Anybody have any other questions?
Greg.
It's not a public hearing. Can we hear from Greg?
From a, a history standpoint, where we didn't have this kind of thing, from a history standpoint, we didn't have this kind of thing, we had water tanks at Academy, at a lot of our large stores, because we didn't have a large enough, we didn't have enough pressure in these areas for these large sprinkler systems, okay? So I think it's a great thing that, that Press has got going on here to help us identify future issues we could have for, hopefully, we're going to get more big stores. So they got to have sprinklers. So that's all, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
All right, Brent. You, oh, did you? My apologies. You shouldn't sound like Jerry. Please vote. Okay, going on to item 7B, consideration and action on ordinance authorizing a professional service agreement with the same company for a review of the existing water treatment plant.
Yes, sir, what this is, is we need, we need to add a new clarifier to our existing water plant to increase our capacity. And this is the first phase of doing that, to get a new clarifier going. We have that money budgeted in our budget from the bond issued for the water plant, and this is the first step to make sure that when we build a clarifier, that our plan can handle the additional water that it's going to produce. So it's, it's, it's part and parcel of getting a clarifier, but to make sure we're doing it the correct way, that we're not going to create something that's going to give us more problems in the future, but it helps us analyze our existing plant, add the clarifier to it, make sure everything's going to work properly, and we'll get what we want to out of it. New clarifier should add somewhere around 3 to 4 million gallons a day to our capacity. So this is, like I said, this is phase one of the clarifier design.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Go ahead, Jim.
Who?
Jim?
Do I have a second? Okay. Passes 7-0. Thank you. Next item, 7C, consideration and action on an ordinance authorizing a change order number one to the Texas Bit for 2020 SIP project for additional streets to be added. Press, you're a popular guy.
I know, it's my night. No, so what this is, after we did the streets of our 2020 SIP, we had additional funds left over. Our original thing is an estimate of quantities and prices. That's how we start off. Sometimes it takes less quantities than we had anticipated. We had this money additional. We came up with five streets that had already had water and sewer replaced in them. So we feel these were good candidates. They were on our list previously, didn't get to it. So this was an opportunity to get to these streets that, like I said, water and sewer has already been rehabbed, you know, new water and sewer installed on it. So they were perfect candidates to come in and fix these roads up. So we're asking permission, due to change order, to add these. There's no change to the budget, the money's budget, there's no additional increase to the city, it's just utilizing the funds that we have available.
Did you coordinate with our transportation subcommittee about selection of the roads?
Yes, sir, we did. We took it to the Transportation subcommittee, and they agreed to this list also.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I, I have a question. I think in our material, at least in the newspaper today, it referred to Washington Street as paving east of Washington Street and west of Washington Street. East and west of what, of what is what I'm interested in. Is it Wesley Street or...
I think so.
I think what it is, is Washington Street east and west being divided by...
Where is it divided is what I want to know.
I think it, it, Wesley.
Is it Wesley or...
I believe it is Wesley.
Okay, I was just, that's, I'm just curious about that.
Isn't that a state highway? Wesley's a state highway. No, I know, but Washington, Washington is 380. I'm sorry. Yes, I... Washington is a city street. That portion of it is.
Right. Well...
Not in downtown Washington.
302 is Lee Street, and coming back down the other way is, I'm, I'm like him, isn't that part of the state?
Yeah. Between, between whatever it is, part of it is 380.
Was it Washington Street?
Yeah. Because it's, it's eastbound 380, westbound 380 is Lee Street. No?
Oh, yeah.
Washington.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Downtown.
I'm sorry, I asked a question.
Steve, we can't hear you. Please come up.
I'll withdraw.
Let, let me write that down. Steve says he doesn't know what he's talking about.
Right down from City Hall on Washington Street, when you, before you get right at the municipal building where you had to make that turn, which you're referring to off 380, I think it's, I think the state is right there, right there when you turn to get on Washington off of Lee Street. Yes, sir, right there at the tracks, I believe that's...
So from the trap on down past Farmer's Market is state?
Yes. Yeah.
I'll withdraw my question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but you got Steve to admit he didn't know what he's talking about.
Fair question. Is there a map that shows?
Next time, I'll put a map over there.
Yeah. I think a map would be best.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain...
But we're not paving the US highway. No, we are not. Okay, all right.
Are you done?
I, I want to make sure.
Just, just want to be sure. I'll entertain a motion. Pardon me?
Public opinion.
Oh, right, public testimony. My apologies. Someone wish to speak on this? Who? Is Larry here? There he is. Larry? Okay.
Just beep when it's, it's up.
He's got your time on, on the phone there.
Larry Milton, 616 Beaver, Greenville. In August 25th last year, when this project was approved for 1.5 million, today, we're asking for a change order for $450,000. Based on data I've received from the city to date, this budget is $400,000 over, not including this change order. So...
I think, I think, Larry, the budget item was $2 million for street improvements. That's what we've had for several years.
I'm aware of that. I'm saying, right now, the 2020 budget for SIP is $800,000 over, based on data I've received. So where did the money come from? How did we get it all of a sudden? Back in August, you were told that there was only 200, approximately $200,000 left after the bid, because there had been previous dollars spent. Now, all of a sudden, we've got double that. I don't understand the math.
Summer, do you have any comment on it?
I do. I think what Mr. Milton is referring to is the fund balance in the street improvement program. When we met with the subcommittee, we also gave them this sheet, the same one that Mr. Milton is referring to. And what has happened over the years is we've got into Traders Road litigation that obviously cost us money, which council directed us to do, and those monies are coming out of what fund balances are left from previous years SIPs. And, and his statement is saying that the 2020 SIP is $800,000 over is not correct. Like you said, we approved the 2020 for 1.5, and then also, we're asking for this additional 450. But previous ones that we had approved, obviously, Traders Road litigation, which amounts to about $800,000, has come out of those fund balance funds, which there is money for those. And it's just an accumulation of not using all of the... And it's just an accumulation of not using all of the street improvements, which the Subcommittee has reviewed that same information as well.
So in essence, we're running a slush fund. Then if, if we've had that much money left over, why are we only doing $2 million a year and not going back and, and using the unused funds?
Well, we can't get into a back and forth during this time, because that's not on the, the thing. He can make comments, and we can answer questions, answers of policy or fact, but we cannot get into an argument about what counts as a slush fund, because it definitely does not.
We're not allowed to get into a conversation on that. All we can do is make statements of fact. Anybody else? Carol?
Summer, so I, I wanted some, a little bit of clarification. So each year, let's say, there's $2 million in the fund, we do a, a contract, and the contractor comes back, and, and after they've measured how much asphalt they've used and all of that, if it comes in less, if it comes in at 1.7, that means there's 300,000 that hasn't been used, and that stays in the fund?
It could be. It could stay in the fund. I mean, we're talking about street improvement program since 2014. And so if, you know, if there's 100,000 here, 50,000 here, which, you know, if you can't do, you can't do a lot for 50, so, you know, we, staff might not have brought it forth to council to do a change order, whereas we had 450. So that was enough to do a substantial amount of streets either way. So, you know, instead of just partially doing, you know, 50 or 100 or 150, or if we had 300, I mean, I think 300 we would have brought forth to you, then we, we would have had that. So that would be what staff would recommend. So, I mean, you're talking about for the last six years.
It would seem like a, a policy going forward would be if, if you have a couple hundred thousand left, or let's say you have $50,000 left over at the end of this year, then next year's street improvement program would be the 2 million plus the 50 that's left when you go to bid it out, right? Or you...
I mean, that would be a budget, council decision for the budget.
To not just leave the money there for years, but to pour it into the next year and, and have a bigger amount.
Correct. Which, I mean, if you know Traders' Road has been going on for almost that long, so, so it's not like we...
I think that's part of what happened, is there was money just left there and never addressed. And I think Summer has looked at it and said, wait a minute, we've got this money in there, we need to spend it accordingly.
Smart.
Okay. Any other comments?
This year, we did sign a contract with tax bid for up to 1.5 million for the streets and quantities we had in there. At the end of the day, with the quantities and what we did under that contract, we were only about 1.12 million dollars. We're using the rest of the money from the 1.2 to the 1.5 for these streets. But we're not asking for a budget increase. We're just asking, since these streets were not on the original list, to add them to it, we're not increasing the budget or monies to tax bid.
But if we approve 2 million, why are you scheduling 1 and 1/2?
Well, that's what, when we scheduled it out, we had 1 and 1/2. We always keep some monies back in case something comes up as an emergency street that has been rebuilt, we have monies in the budget to do it. And like Summer said, if that money's not used, we try to roll it over to the next year. We do not try to keep that much. We always try to come out, like you said, 50, maybe 100,000 left over, make sure we can cover any emergencies that come up. For some reason, we were real low on the quantities this year, high on the quantities. But we have this money already budgeted with tax bid. We're just asking your permission to expend it on these additional streets that wasn't on the original list. We're not asking for any additional buddy, budget monies or anything of that nature.
So as of this moment, we spent about a million one of the total?
Yes, sir.
$2 million in street improvement funds. And this only brings it up to the million five or whatever the number is, round numbers?
That's correct.
So we still have a $500,000?
We have approximately a little over 400,000 left in there.
That is not designated.
Is not designated. Now, we are still looking at streets that we could possibly bring back to you in the future, but these were streets we knew that needed to be done.
I think that's why, I think that the problem I hear from Mr. Milton, I guess we haven't, we have funds that we have allocated at least to the departments, and they're not being used, and then they're not getting reported to us like what's left. To me, if it's, it should amount to, if it's $20 left, if you go into the next budget year, unless there is a certain percentage that you try to keep over, we'll let the council know, so that we can...
Cedric, it's listed in the budget on there, in the budget book. It, it shows each year, back to 2016, I think, shows how much is remaining.
Just to be clear, we're writing these contracts as not to exceed?
That's correct.
Right. So if it comes in under, okay.
If it comes in under, we're just bringing it back. You say, we're going to do these additional streets. Now, we could probably look at another, maybe two, three streets with this money left over. We don't foresee any problem, because now we're in the 2021 budget with that money, so we're putting that list together for that. But in the meantime, if we can come up with two or three more streets, spend that 400,000, we will certainly bring it to you for that.
Okay, work closely with the Transportation Subcommittee on, on how we do that.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the change.
Move for approval.
Second.
Who did, who did, Jerry, was that you?
I did second, but somebody else, I think Chris did also.
Everybody seconded.
Everybody wants to second. I'm just going to give it to Jerry. He's the one that claimed it. All right, please vote. Passes seven zero. Thank you. Okay, seven C, consideration and action on an ordinance for the sale of the agency's Given Creek Steam Electric Station. Summer?
Yes, Mayor, this is going to be an ordinance asking council to concurrently agree with, as a part of Texas Municipal Power Association, or our agency, I apologize, which includes Greenville, Garland, Denton, and Bryan, to be able to sell the plant, which is a little over 6,000 acres, that is located down at, in Graham's County. And what they would like to do is, since we have not utilized that plan or operated the plant, part, portion of that since 2018, is to be able to sell it to this group. It would save, bottom line, it would save for all four cities about $48 million in decommissioning and environmental costs. And as far as environmental and legal and all those aspects, the lawyers, which we have, Juice's lawyer and also Juice's GM here, if you had any questions in regards to that. Greenville's portion of that would be a 4.83 million in savings to our ratepayers. The group that is selling, that we're selling it to is not planning on operating the plant going forward. They plan on different redevelopment of that area. And also, the other four cities, it'll go before three of the cities today, or today actually, and then one other city later on. In order for this sale, the asset purchase agreement, which is very lengthy, I don't know if you guys read it or not, but it was in your packet, it has to be agreed upon by all four cities. So if you have any questions, Daniel can answer any questions, or Juice's legal is here as well, or the GM of Juice is here as well.
Now, this wonderful document has been already approved by the Juice Board of Trustees.
That is correct. Yes, I apologize. Yep, they approved it, I believe, last week.
Okay, does anybody on the council have any questions or comments on it?
I have a little comment, I hear. I think we reflect back to the time that you, I were on Juice's board, this has been a long time coming. And I appreciate all the work that the board and their legal staff did, volunteer.
Carol, do we have any public testimony on this? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
All right, Al? And it passes seven zero. All right, the next item, resolution, consideration and action on a resolution approving or disapproving consent to the inclusion of the city Greenville's extra jurisdictional within the proposed Hunt County Emergency Service District One. Daniel?
All right, there's a emergency services district that's been applied for. Basically, that will be a fire company, effectively. It's a brand-new government. It's an overlay government with the county. But it would, it doesn't cover four cities. Greenville is one of those cities. And what they're asking for is for the city to either approve or disapprove the inclusion of the ETJ around our city into their taxable area where they can, where they would also then provide fire services. Our, our fire department already provides fire services in those areas under our, what is it called, Summer? I forgot, the mutual aid agreement. And, but the other cities are considering this, this week as well. The actual ESD public hearing is coming up on Monday, February 8th. It'll be at the Greenville Municipal Auditorium, starting at 6:00 PM. And that's the time to come and ask specific questions about what the ESE actually is and how the authority within the ESE works, and where the tax revenue comes from, and who sets those rates, things like that. And then the following morning, Tuesday, the 9th, the Commissioners Court will take formal action to either put that on the May ballot or to not. But basically, all you're being asked to do here tonight is, assuming that the ESE is formed, and then voted on in May, to move forward, do you approve or disapprove consent to have our ETJ become part of the taxable and service area?
Does anybody have any comments or questions? It looks like to me that if this goes in, that what it does is the people that are in the ETJ, it just gives them another taxing authority.
It does.
And we would probably still end up through mutual aid, providing fire support there, so...
Almost certainly.
Yeah.
It waits for the first...
They would pay an extra tax, but still get the same mutual aid coverage. Anybody want to make a motion?
More taxes for the same service is something I'm against.
Say again?
More, more taxes for the same service is something I'm generally against. So I, I'd make a motion to disapprove consent.
Second.
Second. All right. We got Brent and Cedric. Cedric was quick. And this is to disapprove the request. And it passes seven zero for disapproval. And item eight B is consideration and action on a resolution approving updates and revisions to the library's circulation policy. Olivia?
Evening, Mayor and Council. These changes and revisions to the circulation policy bring us into agreement with the ordinance changes that y'all voted on in October. And then we've done some initial, some additional simplifying in the spirit of the clarity and brevity that we tried to make sure was in the ordinance as well. So that's why it looks a whole lot shorter in length, but all that detail is, is elsewhere in the policy, and we didn't see the need to repeat ourselves. If you have any questions, though, I'm happy to answer them.
I would like to comment that I think you've done an excellent job making the library available for, for the public and doing great programs for the children. I think it's critical that the kids have access to that, and I think you've done a wonderful job there.
Thank you.
Anybody have any comment or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move for approval.
Al?
Second.
I'm going to give, I'm going to give Tim for second. Al, you got to vote. You haven't voted. And it passes seven zero. Okay, next item is the consent calendar, which is the city council meeting minutes from December 8th. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that? Anybody have requests for public testimony on that? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Summer?
Cedric, was that you?
Oh, that was Jerry, and I seconded.
Oh, go ahead.
All right, Cedric? Kristen beat them all out by just saying second. Please vote.
Aye.
Passes seven zero. Thank you. Okay, anything, Summer, on, on the COVID-19 updates?
I do not have any changes, but I will bring back to you, I think we did it through January, the last meeting, so I'll be bringing back to you to extend it further in the same manner. And if anything changes between now and then, I'll bring something to you at the next meeting.
Okay. One of the things that, the next item will be the monthly financials for November, but before Talia starts on that, I put up, I get information from the county health office that identifies the number of positive cases that we get, and it's almost on a, on a daily basis. We've had some problems since about Christmas time, getting reports every day, and part of that is due to medical problems within the reporting chain and, and some of the data from the state. But our numbers are still very, very high. So please exercise the mask. I see many of you wearing masks tonight out there. Please, you know, wash your hands and do social distancing. This is, when we get the vaccinations through, hopefully, a lot of this will go away, but given the knowledge that everybody's got about this virus and the good and negatives on the vaccines, we don't know that after you've received both vaccinations, whether, how long it's, it's good for, whether that's a year, whether it's six months. So they're asking that we still maintain that, that health profile.
Mayor, may I, may I just say, I think one thing that you, you failed to mention there that I think is the most important thing is if you're sick, stay at home. I don't think, I don't think masks do anything for a million reasons that I'm happy to talk to anybody about, but one thing that I do know is that sick people transmit the disease. And a lot of people are sick, but they feel like, well, it's probably not COVID, so I'm just going to go out, or it's safe to go out because I'm wearing a mask. No, if you're sick, you need to stay at home. And, and so I don't, don't feel like, even though these measures that we're taking to try to appease the COVID gods or whatever we're doing, we're, the, the most important thing that we know, whether it's flu, whether it's cold, whether it's any other kind of virus, is sick people transmit it. So I, I think everybody needs to kind of take stock of themselves each day before you get up and go to work, or, or wherever you go, and say, am I well enough to leave the house? And, and that, that would be the best thing to do.
Thank you. All right, Talia, you're up for the monthly financials.
Patty? I asked you to...
They have, now, the, the stats are showing that asymptomatic spread basically does not exist. Very, very, very small numbers of people are asymptomatic transmission, just like every other virus. If you're not sick enough for it to affect you, it's not generally sick enough. It doesn't mean it doesn't happen, and we should still be careful, but sick people transmit it, and we need to be very, very careful for sick.
I'm sorry I brought it up. Moving right along to the financials.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be as of November 30th, 2020, which at that point, we are 17% through fiscal As of November 30th, general fund revenues were at about 4 million or 16...
Get a little closer to the mic. Don't move sideways. We're going to call you Steve if you do.
Okay, can you hear me? All right. $4 million or 16% of expected collections. Okay. Can you hear me? All right. $4 million or 16% of expected collections. The biggest piece of that as of November is going to be property tax. General fund expenditures, $4.5 million or 16% of budgeted expectations. Public safety is the largest piece of that. Sales tax, this is year-to-date, 2020 through November, are up at that point about $150,000 or 11% compared to November 2019 at the same time in that year. The chart will show you kind of that increase. And then at the bottom, you can see the remaining sales tax that we'll need to collect in the rest of the year is about 6.4 million. This chart is showing you sales tax versus our comparison cities and the city-only portion of that during the month of November was $774,000, which, just looking at only the month of November, is an increase of 17% compared to November of previous year. That's going to be money that was collected in September, reported in October, and then we finally get it in November. It depends also on what month they're reporting on. Like I said, okay, it could be... And again, that last number two is just, you're going to get a different percentage depending on what numbers you're including. This number is only what the city receives. That doesn't take into account any payback arrangements. It doesn't take into account economic development portion. So I don't know exactly what number the paper was reporting on. So I don't want to necessarily say whether that's right or wrong or anything else, but thank you. I appreciate that. This is showing the history of November sales tax. And again, this chart is just showing the net payment that is actually received by the city. So you can see the increase there from 2020 to 2019 for the month of November. Water and sewer fund revenues through November are 2.2 million or 15% of budgeted expectation. And then our hotel motel, it's been interesting to look at every month. In November, we are down 10% where we would have been from the year before. But if you kind of look at the trend, it's trending normally, just a little bit less than we normally are. Take that for what it's worth. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you. All right, next item, item 11. Anybody have anything they want to propose for the agenda? Moving on, board and commission minutes. We've got substandard structure rehab board minutes for October 7 and June 1. And we have the board of development minutes from November 17. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that? All right, Daniel, you're done with executive session? All right, I have 7:24 PM and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much for attending and stay safe.